You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of June 21st. Second?
Uh... Recording in progress.
Motion made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 21st. Any additions, deletions? Those in favor?
Aye.
I think we're going to table July 6th. We're still working on it. It's finalized.
Wondered where they were.
Being finalized.
Make a motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes 1, 2, and 3 of July 6th.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of July, the non-public minutes of 1, 2, and 3 of July 6th. Any additions, deletions? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Michael, what was the junkyard permit? I didn't see that.
Uh, that's for Buffums. That's our one licensed junkyard. It's an annual license for no...
Okay. It's the one?
Yes.
The one license?
The one license. Currently.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda. Second? Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any additions, deletions? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Public input. Hearing none. Those in favor? All right. Um, Ashley, you're up.
So, I have come to ask you, gentlemen, your thoughts on postponing Old Home Day this year. Due to the fact that Talbot Hill's not horribly stable, we've had a lot of farms and organizations back out, one of them being like the Red Cross. So now we don't have that additional first aid station. Personally, myself, I'm a little chapped out right now, just with everything that's been going on. One of our committee members also lives at Popper Pine, so she's been completely devastated with everything that's going on right now. And there's a 70% chance of thunderstorms all day Saturday as well. I am a little worried about the rain coming on Friday as well. Five minutes of rain at Brown today flooded the entire infield. There's just no place for this water to go right now. I don't want to cancel it altogether. I think it's an amazing community event. We used to do a Swansea Cover Bridge Day in October, the first day, the first Saturday in October is our Swansea Cover Bridge Day itself. I would love to try to maybe tie something into Old Home Day around that time this year, if that's, if we're able to move all of our members and things like that. But we're taking a big hit, like the petting zoo for the kids zone is unable to make it now. A lot of farms and people are going, we've got to take the weekend to recover still. And I understand where we're coming from. So that's why I don't want to cancel the event. I think maybe pushing it back to a later date this year is going to benefit everybody. And I'm just here to kind of get opinions and feedback. If it's something you guys want us to see us push through, we can definitely try to make it happen. It's just, there's five of us, or there's six of us on the committee, and it's just, all of us are going in different directions right now, dealing with the flooding and just job impact to the flooding and stuff like that. I don't know if anyone sees Talbot Hill. I went down it today. It's very concerning in my mind to kind of maybe stage a large parade upon it. I know the lower half isn't as bad as the upper half, but that lower half still looks pretty rough this morning.
Yeah. I was up there today.
It is. My husband, my husband works for Public Works and he laughs at me, but he'd say, "Don't touch Talbot Hill, please."
It's a nightmare.
It's very sad to see all their hard work from last year go down the drain.
There's still probably people using 32 to 119 to get to Winchester and Souths. Not really a good idea.
And I know they just only barely opened up a small portion of Swansea Lake that you still can't get down to the Holbrook right now.
There's a box trucks for the cover bridge.
Oh yeah, there you go.
And I do know the fire department's the only people providing food. I don't know how, where they're at as well. I hadn't reached out to make any yet today. I do know a lot of our...
Didn't you have other food vendors?
We did not come, have come backed out. That's why Misty, that's why I was checking my emails to see what Misty had kind of said. We only have, the fire department confirmed as a food vendor now from all the people who backed out, like the Hanter Sticks is not joining us, the petting zoo is not joining us, Hemlock Hollow Farms is not joining us, the American Red Cross is not joining us anymore. And those were just emails that I've had a chance to look at today.
Would the school still let you use the property in October?
That I would have to definitely be a cop, I just haven't had a chance to get to this.
So basically you're just asking to have it delayed to a date to be determined?
Yep.
And it could be next year?
I would hope it not to be. It could be, yep. Or yeah, we could just roll in for next year type thing. I'd really like to see it touch off. I'm just, with the state of the town and everything like that.
Okay. Do we need a motion or consensus?
Sounds like consensus.
Perfect.
And your committee is in support of that?
They are. I spoke with a bunch of them this afternoon. It's just...
Are there any people that need to be contacted so they don't show up?
Absolutely. And I'm going to go home and do that right this morning. I have everything already like pulled together to contact people, but I rather, I wanted to come and get an opinion from you guys before I made a very large, like what I feel is a very large decision since this is a very big annual town event and things like that. It's just really hard to see all these people who normally join us and attend not be able to because of their conditions of their properties and things like that at the moment. And what's a life on the farm with a world of funny animals?
Well, let's see if the people that are canceling out can be available later.
Yep. Well, that's going to be the conversation too, is that we'll send out a date. And me, if it doesn't work for, to kind of tie it into that Cover Bridge Day, we'll gladly look at August before the school goes back in. I think that might be a good idea too.
You might have to look at that because of the school.
Yeah. And I will admit, I haven't had a chance to really consider alternative options for a day and things like that right now. Just, I relocated camp again, so it's, it's been a lot going on. But yeah, I will have a chance to sit down once we get our feedback underneath us and I can make a solid plan to go forward with everything.
And how is the camp running?
Good. We only had 44 kids today, but we had a great time at Brown. We pulled up the sprinklers that we used for the infield over there, and the kids were able to still pull off and relax and...
Only got downpour on once?
Only once. Flooded the infield. I bet Swamp House actually...
Are you going back to the lake tomorrow or?
Well, the lake's closed for E. coli, and the state's asked us to stay off the roads until they're fully open, just because it too, it's not super safe for like EMS to try to get to us if we had a medical emergency and things like that. Really it's a lot more accessible where we are at Brown at the moment.
You think that, so you're waiting on, on the roads to be road free?
Yep.
So next week could be the same way?
I'm really hoping it won't be. I heard that they're pretty close to the end of Holbrook being passable, and with the 32 being open already, there's already one way in and out and things like that, which makes me feel a lot more comfortable.
Sure.
And things like that, just the delay time of getting to us if something was to happen is always a concern. But yeah, and well, the lake's gone bad. And we have not confirmed a date yet for retesting next week. It won't be tested until next week, just because the state knows we do have more rain coming, so there's no point to test anytime before that happens. But with, I'd like to get back to the beach, but a big issue is that the entire campsite portion of our property is flooded. So like you step in the grass or anywhere, your ankle deep in water, which has been slipping, falling, hazard. There's a lot of rocks too that the kids go and woo and smash ahead. I'm not looking for no major injuries.
And you've got help communicating with the parents?
Oh absolutely, yep. I had, I was away over the weekend when I got the phone call that everything was flooding, and I called two of my staff. And they're like, "Stop worrying about it. You've got it under control. Go enjoy your evening." And my staff took care of everything, contacting all the parents. And we're absolutely amazing. And they came in Tuesday. We spent all day Tuesday lugging sand back onto the beach toward about washed out areas, and then they packed up all their supplies and helped me lug everything over to Brown. And they showed up with bright smiling faces this morning, and we rolled out like nothing had ever happened.
Good. And the circumstances on Saturday, there's a, there's a means in place to avoid that happening in the future?
Having...
The beach not open?
Oh, the beach not open? Yes. So that was just a miscommunication with the staff. I have two staff that are going to be at the beach going forward every weekend. It was just the one last weekend where there was one staff, and I, I missed the ball, where he showed up on Friday and I didn't question why, but he just didn't realize, like somebody still needed to come open the gate and all of that.
Sure.
Yes. So hopefully not, that will not happen going forward. And I also...
Initially, when it was discussed, he thought it was for future reference, not realizing that it was approaching the emergency crisis.
At the time, yes. And I also planned to not go out of town again.
No, no, that's not...
You have to do that.
Let me tell you something like this happens.
Have the improvements hold up? The bathhouse and the...
Perfect. Uh, the bathhouse is in great condition. The spillway, the little slipway is pretty rough, but it was rough before, just because we've been seeing so much water, so we've had a really hard time setting the grass specifically in that area. We did deal with the overflow of water coming out of the building, washed away some sandbags, which washed away a large portion of the beach where we first walked down in. We are noticing though, that how the new pavement comes in is sending water not down anymore, but around the building the other way. So we had beach washed out, well, the beach washed out the other side.
Beach.
Yeah. And yeah, this is another good problem. The campsite took the hardest hit though, because we have stairs over in there, and it just, where the water came down off the hill washed everything out around the stairs, and they're not horribly stable at the moment.
Thank you.
But all in all, it held compared to...
Compared to what it could have been?
Yeah.
Yes.
It held up pretty well.
The bathhouse, it's beautiful. And yeah, it was only just those few little areas that kind of washed out. Everywhere that we fixed didn't wash out, which is a lot.
Good.
Absolutely. Perfect.
Thanks, Ashley.
I don't have a sense of loss.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Not listed on our agenda, but Mr. Quazak asked if he could come in and give you a brief update on the, how the rail trail, the Ashwila rail trail, compared to the storm issue.
Thanks for taking me the last moment. Uh, yeah, so I went out and surveyed both rail trails, Cheshire and Ashwila. Cheshire's in fine shape, really didn't get impacted, which was nice, but the Ashwila trail was damaged. Um, there was a lot of impact there. So I did it from, I went from Criff Road down to Route 10, and rode the whole thing and recorded it. So I think 27 or 24 incidences I found, and six of them I called urgent, which means the rail bed's missing or close to missing. So that's what you have in your handout, so I'll just quickly go through those. Uh, if you got it in order, page 2, so this one's near the electric substation at Pine Street. Uh, there's a culvert right there. In fact, the first picture, I'm standing on the gravel of the substation looking at it. And you can see the whole, um, rail bed's washed out. That's probably about 80 feet wide there. It's now missing. Um, and then page 3 is the same area, but from a side view, um, so you can see there. Um, so yeah, so that was one of the bad ones. And also the next page is another picture of that culvert that's now gone. Uh, if you keep going, um, the next incident, um, uh, which is, you can see the photo, it's not quite as wide. This one's down behind the Brown Farm, um, just a little bit south of the North Holbrook Road Crossing. Okay. So I'm on this one here. Okay. So that one's only 20 to 40 feet wide, so that was one of the better ones. But you can see there, it also went all the way through the rail bed. So that one also totally breached. No one can get through there. Uh, just quickly paging through, uh, the next one, which looks like this. This one's down, if you know where Bob Krebs lives. Um, some people are not calling Krebs Canyon. This one's about 100 feet wide, and where Holbrook, the culvert gave way there, near his house, and then this rail, the rail beds just downstream blew the whole rail bed out. Uh, in fact, I talked to him, and he said the water was getting close to his house, and then all of a sudden he noticed it was going down, and he went out, and he just saw all this rail bed just gone.
Wow.
That's why it all went down. The shoulders on Eaton Road that I noticed driving over here today got fixed. Well, this is the rail trail side. Uh, it washed out. And even the part that's left, to me, is pretty unstable. Um, so it's possible this whole thing could came in. Uh, so that was another one. And then the last one's going to look like child's play, uh, because it's just a hole in the top of the, sure, rail? In top of the rail trail. Uh, it's about a 12 inch diameter, a hole right in the culvert, which is also going to be fixed. So, so those are the, what I call urgent ones, where a lot of the rail beds missing. Uh, I sent everything to Craig Rennie at the, he's the chief of the Trail Bureau for the state, along with a couple other people at the state. He did reply, confirming he got everything, so he thanked me for that, and so did Sean Viallet, who's our district officer. And then, um, I sent him an email and said, "Okay, what's next?" And I'm waiting to hear back. Right? So I'm not sure what the next steps are in order to start trying to fix it. But it's going to be some pretty significant work. So people are going to be cut off. I mean, you can get from Criff Road to Sawyer's Crossing, and then you're stuck. From Sawyer's Crossing, you're not going to be able to get through because of the one at Pine Street and the one at Eaton Road. And then, and when you get to Holbrook, you're cut off again at the one behind Brown Farm and Krebs Canyon. So those two made big sections of the trail, probably should be blocked off. As you can see, someone goes through it, going down pretty far. So anyway, so I want to let you guys know this was...
How would we handle that?
Well, from what I understand, the state is supposed to come in and fix it instead of property. Um, I've heard in the past, they wait for FEMA money potentially to fix it. That's why I'm asking Craig, okay, what's the next steps, you know, just, what happens next? Do they wait for FEMA money? Do they have to report it? You know, what goes on?
Do you think they'd be responsible for barricading it, or is that our responsibility?
Well, I would think they should.
So it needs, that needs to be done first.
Right, I would think so, yeah. Sly, I would be, that's why I tried to get all this information to them quickly, and say, "Here's what's, here's what it looks like down here." And maybe they'll do that. So, but as soon as I hear from them what next steps are, I can let, let them know. Your help might be if it looks like it's going slow, send a message to the state that, uh, so what's happening? You know, just to kind of prod them a little bit.
If Pine Street sinkhole we had, or whatever that was, what was that last year, the year before, is any indication? I think it only got fixed because the people fixing the power lines came through.
Yeah, and that's the one that just got blown out.
That's the fourth.
So yeah, so right, that resource is the one that actually did the work.
Oh, we already did that part.
And now it's gone.
I use it all the time.
Yeah. All right. So any other questions or comments or?
Thank you for doing the research, getting the photos.
Yeah, um, Penny Underwood at Southwest Regional Planning Commission put together a system so we can log all this stuff. This worked really well. So I was out there with my phone, just, you know, doing it with the phone kind of thing, and it all goes into the cloud and I can generate a report. So, I can't thank you a lot for that. It was really helpful.
Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate it. So does Michael need to work with you on this, or do you think you?
Oh, you volunteered some of his time?
Well, he's got extra time.
No, it's all right. I mean, he's very responsive to me.
Julius is the rail trail committee liaison now.
Both of them very responsive whenever we need help, so we'll just continue to work with them as we have.
I'm sure they have other, so we'll probably have to be patient for a little while, I would guess, but we'll, we'll definitely stay on top of it. We'll tag team them. Mike, you know, Michael, Michael get in.
Yeah, yeah, right.
We'll send Bruce in if we really want to get some action.
Yeah, right.
I think Sly's point's a good one. It's the, those areas where someone could be seriously hurt.
Yeah, and the risk, you know, the bigger risk is someone walks up to the edge, look at it, and then it just goes out from underneath them. When I went to see Bob down at his place, I was walking, it was like, "Stop!" He goes, "'Cause that section there was there like two hours ago, and now it collapsed." So things are still collapsing, which also means trees could still be falling. And if we get more rain, who knows?
It sounds like more's coming.
Yeah, no. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you guys.
So, you got a flood any update?
I do. So yeah, as everyone is obviously aware, at this point, we had some significant weather and flooding, uh, primarily Sunday, um, July 9th, and then continuing on to July 10th, which caused, you know, significant damage, close several roads. Winchill, Pebble Hill, Corliss, and Rabbit Hollow were all severely damaged and impassable. The great efforts of our public works department, contractors, police and fire, uh, to respond quickly, emergency management, those roads have been made passable for emergency vehicles and residents only at this point. Uh, more work will still be needed to bring them up to their, their normal conditions. Christian Hill, Dunn Hill, Honey Hill, and part of Atkinson Hill Road are all still, um, closed and impassable, at least at, at least at points. Uh, East Shore Road also still has a portion that's impassable. They're working there today, um, making good progress. And several other roads that suffered, suffered significant damage include Talbot Hill Road, Foxglove Lane, uh, Partridgeberry Lane, and Eaton Road, uh, but those are all open at this time. So, um, probably the next most significant would be Talbot Hill, and it's kind of similar to what Mike described in that I was out there assessing yesterday, it was sunny, and just while you're standing there, the asphalt is continuing to, as it dries out, is continuing to crumble away. Um, so that's, in terms of dollars, especially since it's a paved road, that's, that's going to be a costly one. Um, at this point, still assessing the damage, but looking in the $1 to $2 million range. Uh, our state and federal partners have been very helpful. I got a phone call from Senator Hassan, and also calls from the offices of Representative Custer and Senator Shaheen. Representative Rhodes stopped by, I believe, Monday to check in, met with Pam, and we had a call from State Senator Fenton, close contact with Director Buxton with Homeland Security. Um, so they've all been, all been very accommodating at this point. Um, the big thing we need is a disaster declaration, and then ultimately, you know, FEMA hopefully funding to, uh, help pay for all this stuff. Because Joe has done a great job, um, marshaling resources to, to get those roads passable again in a really remarkable amount of time, but it is gonna, the bill is gonna come due, and it's gonna, it's gonna add up. Um, Pam has been great. We've been forwarding a lot of the calls through her, because everyone wants to call, you know, DPW, and Joe's busy directing traffic at the job site. So Pam's done a tremendous job taking, I'd be willing to say probably hundreds of calls from folks anywhere from, yeah, the significant to the less significant. Uh, people are going to have to be a little patient, um, but Joe's doing a great job prioritizing the, honestly, the top priority is get people that were stranded. Uh, I think if we're not fully there, we're getting very close. I think Honey Hill and Atkinson Hill are probably the last places that folks are still somewhat stranded. Um, but we've been in close contact with them, making sure they have what they need. Um, so yeah, that's, that's my initial overview at this point.
It's remarkable. I understand that, um, Joe has been calling on all of his friends.
All of his, all the assets at his disposal, yeah. No, he's done a tremendous job. SF, the whole crew, Pam, and everyone, so everyone's really stepped up. Sly went and got some food, uh, for folks on Monday to help keep them fed. We've been bringing donuts and pizza and coffee up there to keep them going, so.
Normally, they'll have diabetes.
But they're still, they'll get them through the next couple of weeks anyway.
All right. Um, B.
Julius, did you want to speak to this very exciting policy? So you had, you had an opportunity to review a couple meetings ago, I think you tabled it, because you've got to kind of...
I was asleep on it.
Is there a PowerPoint presentation to go along with this?
Oh, that would not, that would...
It doesn't make it more interesting, I promise. So this all, it's an acceptable use policy for, for computers. Uh, it's very generic in its nature. Primex actually was the one that reached out to us and said that we really need to look into updating our policy. It's, you know, standard boilerplate in a lot of ways, you know, in terms of, uh, it recommends so many characters for passwords. It recommends so much, you know, firewall safety coming from Alan as well. Uh, just, you know, a few boilerplates, you know, recommendations, best management practices of sorts, because as you know, it changes very, very quickly. Um, I would say the primary use of this really is, say, an incident does occur, we can say that we did X, Y, and Z to make sure that we are safe on our end. We need to file a claim. We have had four incidences that I think were relatively, um, well, let's say needed some level of an attention since I've been here. And I think out of all those four cases, we've solved them relatively quickly. But I think we could have had more insurance on our back if, if we had policies like this in place. Not just the cybersecurity policy that was already approved, because that gave us the methods to, to how to act. But this policy basically tells employees, this is what we expect from you guys to do. Um, that's, that's kind of the, just a bit, I could go into the mini phrases for these individual sections if you want to, but overall, I think the idea is, is just to say, employees come to me or, or Michael, and they say, you know, "What do I do for a password for here?" And I can say, you know, "11 characters, pass phrases are what we're looking for," and make sure...
You use the same thing that you use for your personal email and your banking and everything else.
Don't log into your personal Facebook at work. Don't log into your personal Amazon at work, that kind of thing. It, it really is a way to protect employees from us as much as it is us from them as well. And I think the biggest concern we've had is really, you know, towns are a target. We know that. And so if we're the targets and they hit us, is it also hitting our employees as well? And are we liable for that action then? Because we didn't tell them not to up until this point. So if they lose all their social security, credit cards, and Amazon, and everything under the sun, is that our fault? Because we didn't tell them. That's, that's what Primex wants us to address. So I'm not going to shout fear anymore, but that's, that's kind of the, the deal and why Primex is honest about this. And, um, Alan, Alan has reviewed it. He seems to at least agree with the majority of it, so I think that's important.
Make the motion. Second? Motion made and seconded. Those in favor? Aye.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Okay, C.
Chief, did you want to come up and join us for this next item? So as, uh, I believe the board hopefully recalls, basically just after the last time we had the article for the fire station, uh, 2021, we got notice that we were awarded congressionally directed spending, which is kind of the new, new term for earmark, um, and the amount of $200,000 towards that project. And obviously, it's been a couple years since then. We have not gone back for another Warren article, kind of been in the holding pattern, um, as we work on other, other items. But I had a follow-up meeting with USDA, um, officials, who's the one that, that are administering it, um, through the Rural Development Grant. And their preference is that, you know, basically, what are our options, my question? Can we use it for other fire department stuff? Can we use it, you know, we did the addition, would it be possible to use it for that? Um, you know, Public Works needs a building. Uh, they said their preference and senators, the senators' preference, it was Senator Shaheen's office, is to try to continue to use those funds for what they were initially allocated, which is some, you know, new fire station. Not, doesn't have to be the same plan necessarily, but, um, that's their preference is to use it towards that, um, original intent. Um, so they understand, you know, the constraints of local funding. You know, we tried. Um, they're asking us to try again in some fashion, um, ideally at this upcoming town meeting, as long as we're continuing to make an effort and show progress. Um, it sounds like they'll be patient, be understanding. If we say, "No, we're just going to think about it for a while," um, the funds might be de-obligated, is their nice word, but taken back and given to some other project is probably the reality. Um, so I don't necessarily need a yea or nay, or where we want to go with it at this point. Um, but I did tell them I would try to get back to them by the end of the month in some fashion, um, what the board's kind of general response to that situation was. So, again, largely good news, you know, $200,000 that can help go towards the project. Um, but we have to start thinking about it again, which I don't know if any of us want to, but so. Well, if you have anything, kind of, we talked about other grants with Adam, so I didn't think you were busy. I mean, you were there, so you didn't need to, you didn't need to clear, so. Thoughts, ideas, comments?
Um, I mean, I don't know. I mean, the design that was there, it was, I mean, I liked the design. I don't know if it's going to be feasible, so if we look at another design or get some more input, I don't know. Um, I mean, the priority is that we got to get patience to a lot of things. I mean, we still have the land, we still have the property. That's where it's going to be. Um, but, uh, I don't know if even trying to redesign it would be worth it. So.
I think the definition of insanity is trying to do the same thing expecting different results. I think we need to try... I think we need to try something different, whether that's process or the outcome, but...
I mean, you know, we, obviously, we need, we need new facility. We need an area large enough where we can have training, you know, where we're gonna be able to have, you know, where the department can meet at certain times and do training. We still need, we still need the square footage. I mean, I, but we gotta kind of find a way to do it. We're still using this building here for training and other things, so, you know, we still need a meeting space, making it large enough for the whole department at one time to be able to meet as a group, which can still be used as a, a community events, our community meetings on that side of town if need be. But I still, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see the square footage of the building go down or the footprint of the building go down. I just, I don't know if we can make other design changes where it'd be less, I mean, everything's going through the roof now anyways, so.
Well, not to say the EMS issue has been, I won't say solved, but I mean, it's been somewhat, I'll say stabilized for the next three years, at least we have a new provider. Now, we haven't made any long-term decisions about our ambulance, but, you know, we have three bays in that station now. If we went to two drive-through bays instead of the three, that would cut down on some of the size.
Um, I would still stick, I don't, I know, I would, you know, I think three bays, I think we still need three bays. I know if you're going deeper, but we'd have to sit down, you know, crunch some ideas. She was out there. Because you get always, you know, you don't want to build too small and find out they don't have enough room for certain things, but, so.
Sounds like from, at least from some perspectives, the county might have already done that in some ways and they've already been running out of some space over there.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So we could try and learn from their misfortune, I guess. It's a nice little building, but it probably could have been a little bigger in some areas, but...
So obviously not...
They're running out of space?
Well...
Feeling tight?
Yeah.
They still want to be spokes on a wheel though and probably put something up on northeast Tyle Keane and, you know.
Yeah, it shouldn't be the only station.
Respond quicker to all parts of the county, so.
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of something like 5,000 square feet only because this storm, if anything, has proven that, you know, parts of this town could be isolated. We really need the three stations, so we put everything in one basket.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If a big storm comes along and I have to drive to Winchester to get back up over these Swansie or something.
Yeah, that's where, where we actually kind of staged up the other night at Town Hall because it was more of a center location, centers we can get. And we, at the time, at the height of the storm, we were, we're still getting information and gathering it in town. So we were, we weren't sure what was, which routes were allowed, what was not accessible until we found it, you know? It was, it was pretty difficult for a little while there, yeah. No, I get it. I mean, this town is so big that you still need three stations, so. But now we didn't...
Yeah, so we're throwing out ideas, obviously, about the design on the, on the fly, but is there a general consensus of trying to develop something?
What's the current square footage?
Of the existing station or the proposal?
The proposed.
I think it was 11 or 12,000.
Yeah, it was over 10, yeah.
Depending on if you count it, yeah, as an year nine.
I think we ought to bring it back. We can't just sit on it. It's a need. During the course of the rest of this year, we might learn about Cutler, what the prospects are for that. If, if it's the location, that's the issue. And if we end up running the SOR down Eaton Road and all through there, then we'll pick up SOR and Swansie Center and that'll take away one of the concerns, but still gotta find four acres. Still gotta find four acres.
I mean, it's, you know, a lot, a lot of the argument too was, was the location. Some people love the location, some people hate the locations, so I don't know if changing locations, I don't know, number one, if it's even possible. Is it feasible because we already own the land or would that make the project, you know, pass that through? Some people are just dead set against the location, so.
We'd be going against these statistics that we were given if we were to change the location south or whatever direction it is towards the center. And then finding the acreage, that's, that's a conundrum. That's, that's tough. And I also think that if we need to have a station that provides the services, you're suggesting that we need to know what that footprint is. Is it 5,000 square feet? Is it 10,000 square feet? Is it seven? But we're either building a substation or we're building a station. If we're building a substation, then we got people meeting in the garage if this place is, because this is supposed to be generating income. This isn't supposed to be a town facility. So when we sit here, we're, we're losing potential revenue that could be used to maintain the structure and improve it. So for you all to have your meetings here, that's great because we don't have the rental needs, but at some point, we may have the rental need and they, in my opinion, should take precedence. And we need, you need a facility to routine us to have those meetings.
Well, and the other, I think one of the major, major benefits of having that, because we do have the land, we have the property, is that, you know, I've said this in the past and of course, you know, the board notes as well, but to have everything on the property that we need as far as our, you know, for hose testing, for ladder testing, aerial testing, well, instead of right now, we're out in public streets trying to do that. We did the aerial testing back here two weeks ago, you know, so luckily the parking lot was in. But, you know, for our own training purposes, you know, that would be ideal for us, you know? Again, it doesn't have to be, you know, the biggest fire station in the world, but that, that lane and that acreage we have there is ideal for that, that type of work that we need, you know? And again, that, that, that lessens the liability out there in the street, you know? Sly knows we use the Hydrant down on Page Court for hose testing. If we had that available to us at our fire station, it'd be, it'd be ideal. So that's another benefit of having that, that land, that acreage that's already there. We just have to all agree and find the right building to put on it. So we have to take a hard look at it and really, you know, kind of understand what we need, you know?
And it could be expanded later.
Right.
So ends there.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, you know, as, as the addition here gets finished up and, you know, having some separate quarters there and some decon areas there, so we're, we're moving in that right direction, so. But I think new construction would be easier to, like you said, you know, it could, it could be, I don't know if it's modular is the right word, but, you know, again, there's a footprint there and the space is there. You can adapt it to the future, so. That's why I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be too stubborn about it, but I don't want to give up that, that square footage because, you know, we're out of room down here, you know, so, but...
Right now, if I remember correctly, the hot zone is on one side, the bays are in the middle, and then the cool zone? Is there, is there from a safety perspective, an opportunity to move the hot and cool so they're, they share a common wall, which would, would allow what Michael said, to have two bays and, and then to add a third or whatever? Because it would be a lot easier to add on the gable than it would be to try to do something going in the other, the even, each side.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's, there's a lot of possibilities out there, you know? We can begin to look at departments that are in a situation that we're in, you know, that don't have all these funds readily available, that how do they do it? You know, some, there's a lot of new stations that are going up or, you know, what's the, what's the best bang for the buck that we can put into that facility that's gonna afford us the safety we need and the space we need? Really, that's, that's the goal there, so. Again, you know, there's a misconception out there, we're trying to build this enormous thing that's, but we need it for operations, so. Yeah, there's, you know, we can look at that, but I mean, we have to look at everything. Kind of re, we almost have to reinvent it, I think, you know? It presents something. Now, where's, I mean, even if we went two stories, was there a cost factor in there if we went up?
It's usually cheaper to go up than it is out.
Oh, right. So was that in, in the original plans prior to that?
I don't think we ever had a, maybe the first one.
First one up at Stafford Drive had it expandable upstairs.
Maybe that's an option, right?
Yeah, the only thing is, you know, you have to make, obviously ADA, it's gotta be ADA, so, you know, if there's a small, not a lift like this, but probably a small hydraulic elevator, if you have a meeting space upstairs, you know?
And I think that one had such a small footprint, we didn't have to drive through bays. I believe that was a back end.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. Because that had the, yeah, very limiting, so.
It sounds to me as if we need to get cracking in the tail end of this month or the beginning of August. And we need to come up with all kinds of answers and then sort them out and make, make it work. Because it isn't gonna do us any good tonight to sit here
Yeah.
And, and cry about it and that sort of thing. But as far as I'm concerned, I think we should, we should put it back on the burner, not the red, the back burner, but the front burner.
Right, absolutely, you know? I, again, to make, to prove the point even more, I don't think we have to beat the horse anymore, but, you know, the other night, we're in there and, and there's water coming into the half-rat floor, so it's, it has to be done, you know? It's time, it's overtime, so.
Okay.
We okay at least broach in the discussion with Katie about involving her?
I think we got to.
Yeah.
Only in the respect, I, I don't want to see another drawn-out plan that doesn't go anywhere. If she wants to come up with a generic square footage for, you know, this, this is where you park these trucks, or this is what you need for the hot zone, and then we do the calculation, you know, whatever it is, 500 a square foot or whatever, and we go for the money. You know, the taxpayers don't need to see every board and nail in a hundred thousand, $200,000 plan.
I don't think they really did that, but...
You know, you already have a plan, work on you, cut it down.
Right, that's all I...
She did a little bit, but not, she never really eliminated the footprint or cut down on the footprint. She just said, don't finish this, you know, take out the finish.
These are all things that need to be brought to our attention and our attention in, in the course of the discussion.
Right, but I'd rather see some kind of cost estimate that we could go to the townspeople with instead of the complete plan, because if they don't go for it, it's money over the bridge, so to speak, you know, it's...
Yeah, so I was talking...
We have a lot of plans.
Floor plan and, and estimate, yeah. That's all I was referring to.
And maybe with a cap on what the, we think the customer can bear.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Okay, D.
Yeah, thank you.
Town planner, planning director, recruitment.
Disappointing news.
Well...
I want for a motion to accept with regret effective August 2nd.
Second.
What's that?
Effective August 4th.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We unfortunately...
Regret?
Absolutely.
Serious regret, that's just very disappointing.
We unfortunately know this routine, so we've already done some outreach to Carol Ogilvy for some interim assistance. And we have the, we have the ads pretty well drafted, so kind of referencing here, I think, just to kind of cast a wide net and not potentially discourage people, frankly, like Sarah, who we just kind of got lucky with last time, that had a little less on the front end experience, I'd kind of like to post both jobs, which in the past, I would have said, well, that looks like you don't know what you want, and I guess maybe that's true, but with how the perspective has changed on hiring, I think we just need to cast a wide net and be open to potentially people, again, like I said, like her, who definitely far exceeded her expectations despite not having a ton of experience in the, in the field. So I guess I'd like to, at this point, post, post both positions and get as many candidates as we can, hopefully. If someone great with a lot of experience comes in, give them that, the planning director job, and if it's someone that's a little greener and has to work their way up to it and maybe with a mentorship with Carol like we had with Sarah, go the, go the other realm, so.
Similar committee?
Well, last time, I don't even know if we, we didn't do a committee last time because we really didn't have enough options for them to narrow it. So if we have enough where we have enough people to narrow it, yes. I think we just have them just go straight to the boards. I think we only had two or three good ones last time. He's working here.
Is there some of that role that he can take on in the interim?
Well, I'll probably take a little bit on in the interim, yeah, between Julius, Mike, myself, maybe others. He had all hands on Deca verge for a little while. Unfortunately, we're used to it, but we have an extra set of hands, so that would be definitely helpful.
And these are all ready to go?
Pretty much. I mean, they, they would be more ready this week than how this week was, but they'll, they'll be there, yeah.
You all have done well this week.
It's getting late early.
Been a long week already.
Yep.
All right. Ambulance service update?
Just to tie a bow on, obviously, our last meeting, we had the meeting upstairs with the, with the various towns, and we had decided to go with Cheshire County EMS. Chris and I had a couple of meetings and discussions and we were able to come to terms for a three-year, three-year agreement that'd go as in the best interest of the town and protects our interests, so I don't know if they regret that after the first couple of weeks. Boy, they definitely, definitely got our money's worth out of those, especially when that ambulance got stuck out there. I hope they got it back, but, so.
They did get it back, I confirm.
They did, okay, good. Because it was on an island on Dunhill for a little while, so just...
How did it tie in with Pilgrim Pines and, and Dunhill?
Did it?
I read that article in the front page this day that it was Pilgrim Pines and the counselor bringing somebody home and somehow they ended up on, she got hit by lightning, the counselor dead, and somehow the ambulance ended up on Dunhill Road, because...
They must still be learning the roads, if that's the case, because I don't know, that wasn't the fastest...
Tried to go around.
Yeah, that's true. Like Swansie Lake was washed out or something, yeah, that could be.
Okay, administrative update?
Okay, should have picked this one.
Yeah, that too. Nothing additional at this time.
All right. Correspondents?
Couple of emails from Mr. Rogers on Friday. It's in your correspondence.
Non-publics?
Have one for hiring.
For what?
Hiring.
William?
We need to talk about this upcoming...
Oh, yeah, okay. Which one?
Well, before we, before people think they have to leave.
You don't have to leave yet, Bruce, if you don't want to.
No, I got another meeting.
Okay. If you're leaving under your own volition, that's okay.
What's that?
I said if you're leaving under your own volition, that's okay. Thanks for coming, thanks Charlie.
Thank you.
See you, Julius. Which one?
I'll, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I'll see, under what?
B for hiring?
Yeah, make the motion that we go into non-public, under B for hiring.
Second.
See you later.